Megan, I switched the PowerPoint for the one presentation.
Okay.
One of the slides was changed.
Is it still in the? So was it just in Board Docs that it was initiated?
Yes, I just put the old one out and replaced it with the new one.
Okay, perfect. And I think we have enough people here now. Are we all ready to get started? Yes, okay. So we'll call the the meeting to order. And I guess if you have a flag that is visible, or if you want to pull it up on your computer, we can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mark, do we have any changes to our agenda?
We do not have any changes to the agenda.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda before people jump in. Board members, if when you unmute yourself to to motion or second, if you can say your name too, that would be really helpful. Alright, so I'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
Barb Sandy, motion.
Motion by Barb.
Carrie John, second.
Seconded by Carrie. Yeah, any discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any, any opposed? Abstain? Alright, motion carried. So the first thing we have.
Meg?
Yep.
I'm sorry, but I have to figure out who's all motioning here. So is Teresa on the call?
No, Teresa is not on the call. She will not be here.
Is Sue Freeze on the call?
I didn't see Sue. I saw Dale, Brad, and Carrie and Barb.
Okay, so we have five members tonight. Just so that when I take the motions, I need to be accurate. So that's why I'm interrupting and I apologize.
No, that's fine. And this is inherently for anyone watching this or attending to have a board meeting that's 100% Zoom. So it will be a little bit cumbersome. So just bear with us. We're doing our best. Anything else before we move on to the presentations? Okay, so I believe that the first item under presentations is Hadley and Associates. And so I will hand things over to them.
Good evening. We have a PowerPoint we want to share. Are you going to play that? Or do you want us to play that?
You know how to share your screen, Ted?
I think they have to give us permission to do that.
No, you should be able to just share your screen. Everybody should have access to down at the bottom, there's a green share a screen button.
Alright.
There we go.
You get it? So it's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty simple little slideshow we're gonna have here. Yeah, I've got it, right? Yeah, everybody's seeing that, right? And
Ted, you're on mute there.
Ted, you gotta take yourself off mute. Lower left-hand corner.
Got it, got it. Sorry about that. So real, real quickly, the, the short PowerPoints about the purpose of the charrette, the tenants, who should co, and then talk a little bit about maybe where it should be. So, the it's not working that way. Oh, there we go. So the purpose, the purpose of the charrette is to get an agreement on, you know, we've, we, we talked about three questions. Why are we doing this branding? Who are you doing the branding for? And what's the most important message you want the who to leave with? So there's, there's a lot of different whys in why you're going down this road and why we're doing this branding exercise. It's really important to get all the reasons out on the table and, and understand which ones are the most important and prioritize those. For us to do the proper job for you is for us to really understand what those reasons are and to make sure that everybody is in agreement on those. And then the same goes for who it's for. And there's a lot of different things that you could say there. You could say it's just for the kids. But I'm not so sure that's necessarily the case. And then what's the most important message? You want the who to leave with? There's a lot of messages that we're going to talk about. But what's going to be the most important one? Now, understanding those topics gets you to who should be in attendance. And the people that really determine why you're going through this are your stakeholders. And the people you trust to determine why we're branding these schools, what's the reason, what's the real reason? And then people you know that are for and against the branding. Because you want to be inclusive, you want to hear all the views, you want to get all the different things out on the table now and iron these out at this meeting. And the people you trust to decide the single most important message for the who to leave with. Now, those may seem simple. But I think they're, they're really, really important to understand and make sure we're all in agreement. Does, does anybody have any questions? Everybody understand what we're trying to get to? Great. But the last thing that, that we were talking about is location. And right now, we have a tentative date based on our startup meeting of December 9th, which is next Wednesday. Matt and I had an earlier conversation. The question is whether that's a real date or not. You're going to have to decide that. We would like to find a site where people aren't going to be interrupted. It's going to take about between six and eight hours for this exercise to take place. And you know, you're going to have a couple of breaks, but it's really, it needs to be very focused. So, and, and we have found one place right now that we think is the right size and would be compliant at this point. That's in Eloquentville. And because I think that the casino is not available. And I am concerned about the school because I think everybody, that, that would be maybe not now because I think you're all closed, correct?
That's correct. We are fully remote instruction at the time, but we do have the campuses open for staff.
Yeah. So we want to be, you know, as COVID compliant as we can and be safe. But we, we certainly want to be inclusive. And the other thing is if we need to do it on a Saturday, we, we certainly could do that also. So I'm open to any questions you might have.
Does anyone have questions?
Megan, I don't understand. What is this for?
There, this is the consultants, right, for our, our cultural materials within our buildings.
Okay, thank you.
So they've done, just to put this in context, you know, they were, they were the consultants that did the museum, the Seneca at Yerkoi National Museum. They've also done, and since you're here, I get to say this, my favorite exhibit in the Smithsonian, which is the Treaty Exhibit at the Museum of the American Indian. So I'm really excited about working with you and seeing what we can do in our district. But that, that is, and thanks for the clarification, Janet.
Sorry, the reason I did ask that is I didn't know if everybody knew while they were here. I was trying to make it easy. Thank you.
And, and again, you know, for us, this is the foundation that we will build our design on. It, it's really, and I encourage all of you to take part because it's a lot of fun, one. And it's, it's really powerful and it, yeah, it, it gives us the outline of, and, and a roadmap from the very beginning all the way through the end. And if we follow that, it's hard to go wrong. It's, it's worked for, for us every time.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
So, Megan. This is Matt with Turner. We had met with Bob and Justin and the, the district was, Bob had asked us to present this to you guys tonight in hopes that you would be able to select those people, as Ted said, from the community and would be able to partake in a, in the session with next week as a tentative date. Does the administration feel comfortable that that's enough time to pick those folks, invite them, select a location, or should we look to move that meeting back? The construction project that's coming up for Phase 3.3 and 3.4 does allow for the time. So I don't want to make you feel rushed, but just making sure we have the right people in the room, as Ted has mentioned.
So what I'd like to do is suggest that within the next 24 hours, we either lock in that date or look to push off. So by the close of Business Day tomorrow, I'll make sure that we get back to all the stakeholders here and determine whether or not we can pull together the rest of the group that we're looking for. I know that we have already initiated some contact with individuals. So I just need a little more time to make sure that that December 9th date will still work and that we have an appropriate location.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a great night. Have a good meeting.
You too. Thanks. All right. So if there's anything else, the next item we have on our agenda is the presentation on school safety and reopening. And I'm going to hand things over to Mark.
Perfect. Actually, with your blessing, I might do the district goals. Just touch base on that first.
Oh, that's, I skipped it. I'm sorry. I scrolled down. I don't have a paper copy. Yeah, that's, that is the next item on the agenda. So that's not with my blessing. That's just a correction. I skipped all the way down to C. Yeah, we'll do district goals first and then we'll do the school safety and reopening. Mark is in charge of both. So you can.
There we go. So this year, we are presenting the district goals. We're a little bit late, basically, in the presentation since we're several months into the academic school year. Many of these are a revision of the previous goals and enhancement. Later on this evening, these bore, these will come up during a later portion of the agenda. We have added a portion to the goals that we have had for the previous years under health and wellness. And I'll just read these off and we can have a little bit more of a discussion if necessary as we move forward later on in the agenda. So under health and wellness, the district will provide ongoing opportunities for students and staff to engage in health and wellness activities during and after the COVID-19 health emergency to provide a full array of interventions to respond to mental and physical health needs which impact our students, staff, and community. We have begun this process. And at the last board meeting, the Board of Education approved a contract with New EDU, which will allow for ongoing assessments of students. And then we have added on the staff portion of that as well. And we will start to see that come to fruition over the next seven to 10 days. Additionally, tomorrow, the school administrators are meeting with Rethink Ed on a new social emotional curriculum that we will be utilizing with our students and staff, beginning in about two weeks. Under the topic of engagement, the district will provide ongoing communication, digital print, and public presentations to stakeholders and program opportunities to promote engagement of students, employees, and community members to support student learning and ensure continuous improvement. One of our goals for the past several years has been to continue to engage all of the community stakeholders in the school community and get their involvement. So this continues to do that, focusing on digital print and the public presentations. Despite the issues that we have with COVID, we believe we do a pretty good job. We know that Levi does an outstanding job of putting information out. An area that we're going to continue to work on is the gathering of information so that we can continuously improve. Professional development is our third category and is a focus of the district for the past several years. The district will provide opportunities for instructionally relevant training and professional development to better prepare all stakeholders to interact utilizing both a digital and traditional platform for instruction and to enhance student learning, promote equity, celebrate diversity, and to support continuous improvement. So this is an expansion of our previous goal to focus both on the digital platform as well as to celebrate diversity and promote equity within the district. Student achievement and learning, that is the fourth, but certainly not near the bottom of our list. The district will support programming that aligns with our strategic plan and prioritize pre-K through 12 skills and respect, literacy, life skills, responsibility, interpersonal skills, and critical thinking. And if those areas sound familiar, that is because those are the areas that have come out of the strategic planning that was presented about two months ago. Under fiscal management, the district will develop a fiscally sound spending plan to promote engagement, facilitate learning, and student achievement, foster advocacy, and provide a pathway for continuous improvement. We know that Mrs. McGarrett has been working on a long-range financial plan. And this ties in well with this component of the 2021 school goals. I'd be happy to answer any questions on those. Okay, beautiful. I'll take the silence that there are no questions. And if you would like, I can move right into just an update on our school safety and reopening plan.
Sounds good.
So a lot has happened since our last meeting two weeks ago. In fact, it was the next day, I believe, after our board meeting that we were informed of a potential positive case of COVID-19 in our buildings from a student. Due to that potential, we shifted to our remote e-learning plan. The next day, which was the 19th, we were informed that the students did in fact test positive for COVID-19. Thanks to the work of our contact tracer, Mr. Ray Haley, we had already begun the contact tracing and had already spoken with any of the staff, the students, and grownups that were in contact with those students. Over the next four days, we received notification that several staff members had also tested positive for COVID-19. What I would like to note is that each of those instances were separate and not connected to each other or to the initial case. Due to the sudden proliferation of COVID-19 in our schools and throughout Cataragius County, you'll note that this was the first time that we had a confirmed case on campus. And in accordance with our plan, we shifted to two weeks of remote instruction. And we have continued that. And the decision has been made to stay on remote instruction right now until January 4th. So the past two weeks have been pretty busy. I do want to thank all of our staff members for their diligence. It's important to note that we have not had an instance of COVID-19 being transmitted on our campuses or buses. Our campuses are still open to staff and faculty. Should they choose to come in, no one is being required to come in, particularly with our faculty members. But there are enhanced procedures and cleaning practices that have been implemented to ensure that we have a safe environment for those individuals on campus. So that's a little bit of an update as far as where we are. I do again want to thank all of the adults and our students for being diligent. And we will continue to assess and monitor the situation as we progress through the holidays.
Any questions on that, board members? Okay.
Alright.
So, next item on the agenda, and I'm being careful to go in order now, is communications. So first, has Janet, has anyone asked to address the board? You're muted.
I'm sorry. No, no one has asked me to speak publicly.
Do we have anyone on here that's from the Title VI Parent Advisory Committee?
I don't see anybody
Okay.
from that, that group that has joined the meeting.
Okay, I didn't either, but I swiped Chuck. Okay, so we'll move on then to second, or the second item under this heading, which is the central office message. So Karen, Mark?
Um, I've got nothing. Operations as usual. My staff is working remotely to ensure that bills are paid and payroll is processed. And we're still moving along as usual.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. Again, I just want to thank all of our students and our adult staff members and faculty members. Switching to remote for a short term is a relatively complex process for us with regard to transportation and food service. Once we make that shift, the, the challenges are different, simply not having as many individuals on campus. And things seem to take a little bit longer to get done. But I just wanted to recognize all of the work that all of our adults are doing. We seem to have transitioned smoothly and will be effectively and efficiently honing our practices over the next couple of weeks to make sure that we continue the high-quality service that we're used to.
Now, I'm going to go through and just call on each one of the board members. So if you'd like to say something, say it. If not, just let me know. So I'll start first with Barb. Oh, you were, you just muted yourself.
There, I said, okay.
Yeah.
Seems like it's backwards. Okay, I just want to thank everybody for all their extra work that they do to, to make the community safe and help people out. And, you know, I, I see, I hope I see an end in sight and just continue to wear your mask because it's so important to keep everybody safe. And that's it.
Thank you. Go to Dale next.
I think I'm good tonight, Meg. Thanks.
Okay, Carrie?
Hey, I'll just reiterate what Barb said. Just hoping that everybody stays safe. Let's bring these numbers down, you know, do what you need to socially distance, wear your masks. And again, same thing. I want to thank everybody who's putting in the work to make sure the education is still continuing at this time. That's pretty much all I got. Oh, I hope everybody's as excited as I am that it's snowing. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. And Brad? Give him another, another second here. Okay, he said he's having technical difficulties and he's good for tonight and he can hear everything. So that's, that's important. And Brad, just if you, when we go to vote on things, if you can just give, under reactions, give a thumbs up on, on that because that'll help me and Janet kind of keep track. Thanks so much. All right. And then if you say no, if you want to vote no, because I don't think there's a thumbs down, just message it. And that'll, that'll work. Okay. And just me, I just want to reiterate what everyone else has said. These next couple of weeks are really important. We're projected to see spikes in, in COVID cases. Because there were folks who gathered from out of state and had large gatherings for Thanksgiving. And just want to keep in mind too, our plan is right now to come back in January. But if people gather the same way that they did in person for, you know, the Christmas holidays, that puts that in jeopardy. So I think we, we all ideally want our kids back on campus. But we can't do that with really high COVID rates. I did have some questions in the community too about why we were shutting down. And I just want to remind community members that we had multiple presentations of our reopening plans. And we are following that plan to a T. So if you, you know, need a review on that or want, you know, folks to go over that, I'm sure many of us would be willing to do that. Mark, I think, has it memorized by now. So not to volunteer, but that's a good point of contact. But I personally have been really proud of the work that we did on that reopening plan. I've watched other districts kind of scramble and do things kind of willy-nilly, which makes it really hard to predict what's going to happen. We, we had a really thorough reopening plan. And we're following that. So I want to thank everyone who put together that plan because it was a lot of really hard work that happened over the summer. But we can see how valuable it is now. And I think that that's all I have. Oh, just one other thing too. I was listening today on the radio and there was a report saying that, you know, the, basically the skill level of kids nationwide, or it's projected to be down, you know, in ELA and math. But in some areas, they're seeing that kids are doing slightly better in ELA. You know, we won't know. I mean, we, obviously, this is an ongoing thing in our district with assessment. But, but the person was, was kind of speculating that the reason why there were gains in ELA and not math is that grownups feel more comfortable helping their kids with, with reading versus with math. And I just want to reiterate to everyone listening, who, you know, is helping a child or multiple children with remote learning, that even though we're remote, we have a lot of resources. So if you as a grownup are struggling with math or even ELA and need assistance, you know, please reach out to your kids, you know, teachers, to administrators. We have a lot of, a lot of things that we can help with. So, you know, don't struggle in silence on that, you know, let, let folks know. And I think that is it. We'll move on next to the consent agenda. So I, I'm going to scroll here. I will need a motion to approve the consent items.
All motion. Carrie.
Dale.
By Carrie and seconded by Dale. Okay, all in favor? Hi. Okay.
Hi.
Perfect. Any opposed? Abstain? Right, motion carried.
But all five?
All five, yes. I heard, I heard verbally from the ones who could respond verbally. And then I got a thumbs up from Brad. Yeah. And if you guys want to, it's, it's really easy visually to see if you go down to the reactions, just to give a thumbs up if, you know, if you need to, that's just a lot easier to keep track. I'm sure Janet would, would thank you too. Yeah, okay. But does someone have a question? No, okay. Moving on to new business, the first item we have under new business is the retention and disposition schedule for New York local governments. So I will need a motion to approve the resolution. Someone?
Motion, Barb.
Okay, motion from Barb. Do I have a second?
Carrie.
Carrie, seconded by Carrie. All right, any discussion? On this, Karen, can you give us just a brief overview?
I sure can. Um, what this is, is basically the government has, there used to be five or six different schedules, whether you were a school district, a municipality, a fire district, or different, um, gosh, my brain just went nuts here. Different pieces within the government. There were different rules and regulations for records retention. So what they did is they combined them all into one schedule. So now any of our policies that refer to the old one, which was ED dash one, now have to be revamped to refer to LGS one. So that requirement is to be done by January 1st of 21. So wanted to make sure we get this in. And then I will work with our new employee here, Alicia Timlin, to ensure that we get all of our processes straightened out and so forth. As far as, they're not really messed up. It's just that we don't really have anything in writing at this point in time as to how our records are handled. We know what we do with them, but it's just not in writing. So we want to make sure that that happens and that we start to codify and digitize our records here. So use of this LGS one will help with that a lot.
Great, thank you, Karen. Does anyone have questions? Okay, all in favor? Hi, thumbs up? Yeah, okay, or visually thumbs up is fine too. Okay. Any opposed? I don't see any opposed or abstaining. All of us have the thumbs up. So motion carried. Next, we have our district goals. I need a motion to approve. Next, we have our district goals. I need a motion to approve the district goals for 2020, 2021.
Motion, Barb.
Okay, motion by Barb. Second by Dale.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I handed this over. We just went over this, but just in case Mark has other things that he wants to say, I'll hand it over to him again.
Yeah, no, I've got nothing new or exciting to add. Thank you.
Wanted to check. Any questions or discussion on that? Okay, so all in favor? Hi. Thumbs up. Okay, great. Good, that was everyone, but I'll say opposed or abstaining anyway, because it's on my script. So motion, motion carried. Next, we have the change orders and allowance dispersments. This is always Teresa's favorite, so I'm sure she's bad to miss this. I will need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second, Barb.
Second by Barb. And Dale says his internet's a little bit slow because he's on satellite, so there's a there's a bit of a delay there. So, okay, any discussion on this?
I'll just add that it's also my favorite as well as Teresa's, so I motioned in her honor, seeing as how she's not here.
Yeah, I know you're a fan of this as well. I think we all love this item on the agenda every single time. I'm being facetious, just in case anyone has tuned in for the first time to a board meeting. This is our least favorite thing on the agenda. All right, with that, any other discussion or questions? All right, all in favor? Hi. Thumbs up from everyone. Good. Any opposed? Abstain? Right, motion carried. That was five for five again, Janet.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have our Turner Construction Contract. I will need a motion to approve the Turner Construction Contract.
Motion, Barb.
Motion by Barb.
Motion.
As I think Dale just motioned, but it was delayed, so I'll give him the second, if that's okay. So we motioned by Barb, seconded by Dale. Any discussion? Mark, can you speak briefly to this?
I can. Due to the changes that we encountered with our architect and engineering firm, some of the construction that we had anticipated to be scheduled for this summer and the projects, the future projects have been delayed. That caused an adjustment to the Turner contract. Turner has made some concessions with the staffing that they had allocated for particularly the next about 12 months. But this does extend our construction calendar and therefore necessitated the change to the contract that we had with Turner, who's our construction manager.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thumbs up from everyone. Yeah, good. All right, five thumbs up. Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Okay, next, we have a contract award. Again, I'll hand this over to, or no, wait, first off, do I need a motion to approve the Archie Donahue, am I pronouncing that right, Sandin Incorporated contract?
May I interrupt? May I interrupt before you make the motion? I'm sorry, but we're changing that contract. It's not an actual contract. I confirmed today. It's accepting the bids, accepting the bids with the request for proposals.
Okay, all right. And was that, is that in Board Docs correctly, Janet?
It is, but it isn't in your little notes.
It was in my notes, okay. I just wanted to make sure if we need to do a change in Board Docs. Okay.
I'm going to change the title and just take out contract and just put award.
Okay.
I'm going to take that wording out, and then just in your, the the resolution is corrected.
Okay, all right. So, no, that's fine. That's fine. I have a cheat sheet from Janet, so just in case anyone's wondering there's a difference there. All right, so I need a motion to approve what Janet just said and what's on Board Docs.
Motion, Barb.
Motion by Barb. Second by Dale. I'm going to give the second there on that delay. Any discussion on this? Can we, Mark, do you want to speak to this briefly?
Certainly. There was some damage to the Prospect Gymnasium floor due to a, I believe it was a drainage conduit that was not covered and caused a backup of water. What this does is replaces the damaged flooring with hard maple and sands and refinishes so that we can get it to a point of safe use for students.
Great. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Thumbs up, okay. Any opposed? Stain? Motion carried. Next, we have a series of MOAs, and I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreements.
Well, I'll move Dale.
Dale, okay. Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Carrie. Mark, I'll have you give an overview of this again.
Did it. I was on mute. Man, I can't get through a single meeting. So I think it was about two to three months ago, the school board had requested that we investigate process for compensating the 11- and 12-month employees who had worked during the initial shutdown from the pandemic. So that would have been from April to May, or I'm sorry, from April through June. What these MOAs do is provide an additional compensation that ranges from essentially $0 to $1,000. And that is based on the number and percentage of time that they actually worked compared to their contracted time. So this is essentially sort of a bonus to recognize those employees, specifically the 11- and 12-month employees that worked exceptionally hard during the initial shutdown due to the COVID-19 pandemic. These have, in fact, gone through both the Personnel Committee as well as the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion from board members? I'm hearing none. All all in favor? Hi. Okay, great. Any opposed? Abstain? Motion carried. We're moving down now to the Personnel Consent Agenda. I will need a motion to approve the Personnel Consent Agenda for items listed in Section 8A.
Motion, Barb.
Motion by Barb.
Second. Yeah.
Okay, second by Dale. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Hi. Okay. Any opposed? Abstain? Right, motion carried. Mark, do we have anyone here on the call?
I do not believe we have anyone on the Zoom tonight that has been appointed to a new position. We do have several individuals who were appointed to coaching positions that are obviously a little bit up in the air due to our current situation. But as always, we just want to extend welcome to those newly appointed individuals, including our bus drivers, teacher assistants, and school monitors.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll give the the clapping reaction, too. It's always nice. All right, um, next item is just the Board Information Reports. I'm a discussion. Just, we've got the first reading of our naming rights and dedications that we went over in a previous meeting, and then a listing of upcoming events, most of them probably virtual. So you can review that. And then there's nothing else from fellow board members or from administration. I'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion, Barb.
I'll make the motion, Dale.
Oh, okay, seconded by Dale. I'm going to put you in the second, if that's okay. I'll call on you first. If I ever have another meeting in person, Dale, you'll be my go-to. Here's this delay. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Great. Well, stay safe, everyone. Please wear your masks. Please socially distance. Take care of yourself, take care of everyone else. We'll see you guys later.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.